Till the conclusion of the meeting and then with we could suspend the rules to allow discussion of school business. Okay, basically suspend the rules and put it on the agenda. Okay? And before we begin the official meeting, Mark has just told me that he would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, before we start, I should introduce the people at the head table. At the very end, Liz Carl is our treasurer. We then have our select board, Jeff Chase, Diana Garrow, and Mark Turco. Yeah, Carol Garrow Woolley is our town clerk, and she's sitting there next to Caitlin Boyle. I think I got everybody.
You did?
I didn't write the names down. I was pretty sure I'd forget somebody or get a wrong name. Okay. The legal voters of the Town of Mount Holly, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Mount Holly School at 6:00 PM in the evening Monday, March 3rd, 2025, to act on the following articles, 2 and 11. On Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, to vote by Australian ballot at the Mount Holly Town Office. Holes will be open from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM to vote on the following articles, 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Articles may be discussed on Monday evening. Article 1 is to elect all town officers as the law directs. That's Australian ballot. Article 2, to act on the town officer's report. May I have a motion from the floor to act on the officer's report?
Motion to approve.
Bob Herbst makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Dave Venter seconds. Any objection? That carries. Article 3, does the town vote the following budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 to be raised by tax? The general fund, $582,685. The highway fund, $532,950. The total is $1,115,635. That's voted on tomorrow, Australian ballot. Is there any discussion on that tonight? Yes. Would you come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please?
If I knew myself, I could. Kevin Plou from over in Hillville Road. So I've got some questions on the budget, and I don't want to belabor the whole thing, but just looking at it, there's a lot of perens in our 24 expenditures. So we overspent quite a bit, right? And I understand, but I'm wondering, one question I have is where does that money come from when we overspend? So as an example, and I'm not picking on the Highway Department because I support it completely, but it's just easy to see.
Could you mention which page you're on?
32.
Thank you.
So equipment, maintenance, repair. We had $25,000 budgeted, and we spent $52,313. So where does that other $27,000 come from?
Some of it comes from money that we raised that was unanticipated, like additional interest income, and also it comes from reserves that we had that were unallocated.
So the budget and covert reserve, maybe, is that where the highway fund money would come from?
Unallocated money in that instance.
Oh, no, okay. So then looking at the 26 budget, or the 25, 26 budget, so the current year, the same item, which we're on page 45, and equipment, maintenance, and repair. The prior year, we spent the $53,000. We had a budget of $25,000. This year, so far, we've spent $27,000 already on a $25,000 budget. It's December 31st. So where are we going with that? And that's just one of many items on here, if you look at this, that we're overspending, it seems like, our funds. And I'm not sure if I'm correct. Maybe that's wrong. Maybe we're not overspending, and somebody could correct me, but...
Well, so a budget is a plan.
Sure, understood. But double is not planning.
But when you look at it in one line item.
Sure.
Compared to the whole.
Right, so I think on the...
When you spend over in one item, then you need to either you have more money coming in that you didn't anticipate, or you underspend in other areas.
I agree. So we ended up with $118,000 over expenditure on the 24 budget, according to this.
When you look at that budget, though, we had over $550,000 in emergency damage related to the July 2023...
Exactly. That's kind of the point I'm getting at. It's kind of what I want to get to there. So I'm looking at the reserve fund, and like the bridge and covert reserve fund's got $126,000, I think, right now, something like that. We're looking at a chance that the current administration may not support FEMA and things like that going forward. So what is going to be our plan moving forward to cover these very high expenditures that are going to occur if we don't get reimbursement for some of this stuff? Very high. So in this budget that you're asking, I think we have $150,000 plus for equipment reserves, right? The fire truck or whatever, and town truck. I think that's awesome, but we're not putting anything away for roads, are we?
We do put away some funds for bridges.
I think we had $17,500 last year.
Culver, and it's the same this year.
So $80,000 or $150,000 for equipment, $17,000 for roads. It seems to be a little bit off. And so I was just wondering if you guys could explain to me what your thought is on that?
I believe the $17,000 is culverts.
Bridge and culvert.
Bridge and culvert, reserve fund, yeah.
So, and I know there's some funding right now that's going to cover us on some of our bridges based on FEMA and some grants. So most of the culverts throughout the town, I believe Clinton and the road crew have replaced the majority of them. But there still is some.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, but I'm really more concerned about the future emergency. It seems like here lately, in the last five to seven years, anyway, we have an emergency every single year. Every single year. So how are we, as a town, preparing for that, especially considering we may not get the reimbursements that we've counted on in the past?
And unfortunately, this budget was done prior to the presidential cuts that have gone through, so, you know, this wasn't expected for potential no FEMA funding and so forth moving forward. So as we look towards the new coming years in the budgets, don't be surprised if...
I mean, is this something we think we're going to have to do and start building this reserve to be significant?
We did substantially raise this year's budget by...
Understood, understood.
It was over, it's about 10% increase over a year.
Right, right. I understand that, but if we don't have the money, we have to pay for it either way, right? Whether we plan for it or not.
I would not be surprised if you see another double-digit raise, if not more, next year because the cost of everything for the town is going up.
Right.
Whether it's road sand, salt, vehicles.
Oh, yeah, yeah, everything. Everything you touch is expensive, right?
Just a new dump truck is $220,000.
Oh, yeah.
Which is part of the plan for this year, which is one of the reasons to expect the maintenance costs to come down. But the answer is you borrow if you don't have the funds on hand when something drastic happens.
Right, but the town as an entity cannot have a deficit over a year, right? So we have to pay it off by the end of the year. We can't, we're not selling bonds.
Correct. There are...
I know you may have a loan.
We could take a current-year loan and then have voters vote on it if needed. Like if there was an emergency, there is a way we could...
Right, I'm just looking at the budget. There seems to be a lot of perens in there, which I, if I was looking at my budget on the farm like that, Mrs. Plou would be kicking my butt. So there's a lot of perens, and so I'm wondering, do we need to really think about that? How are we going to address these shortages? And some of it is probably got to be from savings, right? We've got to think about making some changes to the way we're doing business, but awful lot of perens. When I look at page 32, I mean, there's a lot there, a lot of over, you know. The point, Dave, is that we're spending too much money. That's the point, Dave.
One word, friends.
Excuse me?
What is the word, friends?
Friends?
Friends.
Perens, parentheses. Parentheses, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Parentheses around, so those indicate that we overspent, right? So that's all I'm saying, is we're looking at a lot of that.
So I don't follow, because you're saying we're overspending, but then you're saying we don't have enough.
We're not budgeting enough, then, don't you agree? So we have to raise taxes to, we have to fix this somehow. So we're overspending.
The only way to fix it is to start cutting stuff. So do you want to start cutting road gravel? Do you want to start cutting paving?
Well, no, no, not saying that. There's a lot of ways we can do it, but I'm just, I'm just looking at it.
Well, he's saying cut the spending.
Overall, we have, we're overspending on these... So I'm just wondering if we need to be doing a better job budgeting, and if we have to raise the taxes to do it.
There's two options.
Or lower expenditures, lower expenditures, yeah.
We're not going to go swing the pendulum way over here.
Right, understood, understood.
We've gone 4%, 4%, 10%.
10%, yes.
I don't think anybody's got a stomach much beyond 10%.
Right.
We also, like he said, we didn't know, we don't know what Donald Trump's going to do with FEMA.
Yeah, I don't, that doesn't...
But he says, he could be saying cut FEMA, but he could be saying send the money right to the states. You don't know. You got to listen in between the lines.
Right, sure, I understand that. I understand that. I'm just, we're just looking at the budget overall. We're spending more than we budgeted.
And you also have to look, yes, we had back-to-back catastrophic flooding and damage, and yes, if you look, there is FEMA funds that came in to cover that overspending.
Some of it, yeah, yeah, most of it, I guess, 90% or whatever.
We had a $927,000 positive variance on the income side. So that's what we're looking at, spending. We are considering what else has been in the meantime as well.
And when you're doing storm repair and you're getting reimbursed, it's going to show over is on line items such as equipment repair if you're using equipment.
And this year, we have over $900,000 in income from FEMA.
More than we expected.
The spending, no, but the spending happens, and then the timeline to get the reimbursement could be in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean...
It'll show over budget, but what it doesn't show is too that FEMA has covered that over budget. So...
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any additional? Yes, there is. Discussion on Article 3.
Hi, Bridget Sullivan. I had a question on the highway funds, just an information question. I see that we're raising the summer road labor and the winter road labor both by about $20,000. Are we hiring an additional person for the Highway Department?
No, it was an increase to wages, and we shifted our benefits to a lower-cost health plan overall. So some of the money from benefits went over to wages, as well as there being an increase overall to the wages for the Highway Crew.
So it's the same number of people, but there's a $20,000 increase in wages in each summer and winter?
Because the rate of pay does not change between summer and winter. We've just always tracked it between the two seasons, as most of the overtime occurs in winter.
Okay.
We had an increase in health insurance costs, so we changed, formulated, changed how we delegate to include more reimbursement by the employee.
Okay.
So we kind of moved costs a little bit, but we didn't move costs because insurance costs went up.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion on Article 3? Hearing none, we'll go to Article 4. Does the town vote $80,000 for the asset, the equipment fund, for fiscal year 2025, 2026, to be raised by tax? That's an Australian ballot item. Any discussion on that? A hearing none. We'll go to Article 5. Does the town vote to the Mount Holly Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated an operating budget of $87,000 for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year and vehicle replacement fund of $75,000 for a total of $162,000 to be raised by tax? Again, Australian ballot. Any discussion on that?
I'm just wanting to say good evening. My name's Robert Beardmore. I'm currently the captain in the Fire Department, and I'm speaking behalf on our chief, Billy Austin, tonight, if you attend. There we go. I'd like to start off by thanking all the town residents and taxpayers for your support each year for the Fire Department. Without your loyalty and support, we couldn't provide service to our town of Mount Holly. I'd also like to thank our dedicated volunteers and members for their donation of time and commitment to the department. Our members stop whatever they're doing, leave their jobs and their families to respond to those in need of help. Additionally, these people spend their own time and money training, maintaining our fire equipment, providing snow removal around the buildings, lawn care, building maintenance. And again, they provide their time, use their vehicles at no charge. So these dedicated individuals and our leaderships, what makes our department successful, and I want to thank all the members and the volunteers, everybody involved. We appreciate it, so. This year, our members from our town and mutual aid department donated their time and equipment to help install a new dry hydrant at Lake Nyneva. The remainder of the $12,000 installation cost was installed, was paid for through a grant that the department applied for. Russ Garrow had a lot to do with that. So we were awarded the grant, so it was no cost to the town to install that hydrant. Anybody wants to see it before the boat landing, is go in on the right, very nice hydrant, so. Our call volume for fire and rescue has tripled since I joined the fire service in 1988. With that change in call volume, call volume and demand, there's been changes in home construction, there's changes in the way vehicles are built, we have NFPA standards to follow, and technology changes. So we find ourselves pretty busy with training, keeping up with all of that. We take great pride in inventorying and servicing our equipment every month. Our apparatus, we maintain, but our trucks are aging at this time. We currently have two fire engines, we have two tankers. One of the engines down here at Mount Holly Station is a 2007. The tanker is a 1991. The trucks up in Belmont, our engine is a 1991, I'm sorry. So this tanker down here, I have to correct myself, was a 2012. I got them mixed up. So 2012 engine and a tanker and a 2007 engine. The engine up in Belmont is the 91, and the tanker is a 1993. So when the department set up a vehicle replacement fund in 1990, the intentions were to replace one truck every seven years, so that'd give us 28 years of vehicle life for each vehicle, which seemed to be reasonable at the time, so. Rising costs, as we're speaking about this evening, about everything around us, has caused us to pull back on our replacement of vehicles a little bit. So our engine 2 is now 35 years old, 34 years old. It's the next truck in need to be replaced, and we're in the process of looking at that replacement and getting prices, and it takes, right now, if we order a truck, takes three years to get one, so after we decide this. Currently, a new fire engine is approximately $1 million, and that's for a basic truck. A tanker is $500,000. So if you do the math on that, to replace one every seven years, it comes up with $107,000 a year we'd need at this point, without inflation, just to replace our trucks. So we realize this is impossible right now, so we're working with our old apparatus best we can. This year, we're currently seeking $75,000 for our vehicle replacement fund. We're also in the process of updating our long-range plan for the department. This will include replacement of apparatus as well as the buildings, and we're going to try and estimate inflation costs. Once we complete this long-range plan, we're going to present it to our select board for their comments, and we'll go from there. So, anybody have any questions for me? Sure.
I would just compliment you on that. I just heard from the local Fire Department about their cost of vehicles and what it takes to order and get them all. It's just one of the...
Yep, thanks. We've done a lot of homework on it, and we're as shocked as you are, but it is what it is, so.
Thank you. Any?
I just also...
Any?
I just wanted to thank you on that, that's a good one. Of course, you're on there, I can be...
How do you want to involve a lot of the staff? You are.
Do you want to mention that in the microphone, to have that part of the record? The thanking, the thanking? No, I'm just saying that I think that it probably ought to, yeah, so that Caitlin can get it.
I'm talking. I just wanted to thank the Fire Department for taking on the position of rescue after rescue, did what it had to do, and they are now a first responder also, and I appreciate that greatly, so I wanted to thank them. That's all I said. Sorry. But my name is Kelly Tarba.
Any other discussion on Article 5? Hearing none, we'll go to Article 6. Does the town vote $12,000 for the Mount Holly Town Library to be raised by tax? That's Australian ballot. Does anyone wish to speak to that?
I'm the Town Librarian, and I just want to thank everybody for their continued support of the library and give you a little bit of what we're up to this year. Last year, in 2024, we did six programs, including author talks, movies, family programs. This year, we're doing a whole lot more. It's just March, and we've already had three programs, and we've got a bunch more coming up. What we're doing this year is we're doing a new movie, or a movie, every single month of the year, and what they are is they're classic movies. January, we showed Casablanca. February, we showed The Philadelphia Story with Cary Grant and Katherine Hepburn. And next week, or two weeks from now, March 15th, we're going to be showing American Graffiti, which is George Lucas's first film, and made stars out of a whole bunch of people. It's a matinee on Saturday at 2:00. I'd like to see some of you come for it. I also want to remind you that we have passes to Vermont State Parks, can get you in, can get a whole carload of people in at no charge. Vermont Historic Sites, we have passes for. We also have one for the Berry Granite Museum, and we're adding a new pass this year to the Vermont Institute of Natural Sciences, which will save you a whole lot of money getting your family in there. I want to remind you that we, Cider Days is our big book sale every year, and we always have some great stuff there. And we are also going to be doing the Manhattan Short Film Festival again this year in late September. So there's always lots going on at your library, so come and check us out sometime. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on Article 6? Hearing none, we'll go to Article 7. Does the town vote $1,000 for the Mount Holly Chit Chat to be raised by tax? Again, Australian ballot. Does anyone want, yes, somebody does.
I'm Dennis Deveraux, president of the Board of the Chit Chat, and we are hanging in there. The printing costs went up a little bit. Don Reiser had retired and sold his business to a couple employees. So it's reflected in a lot of things we're doing, and we do try to accumulate a little money because the advertising doesn't pay for everything that we do in the Chit Chat. So we know there's a lot of businesses here that help do advertising in the Chit Chat. So this $2,000 helps. We try to build a equipment replacement fund because the cost of the programs and printers and everything else, things happen, and we don't want to not issue a monthly Chit Chat for sure after over 50 years now. So I'd be glad to answer any question. Our editor, Diana Garrow, is here also.
51 years, Dennis.
Right, I said over 50.
This month. 51 years, this month.
Anyway, so we're, we can answer questions. We appreciate your support, and we did reduce the amount that we were asking, I think, from a couple years ago, but we just, you know, we want to keep it going. A lot of, we get a lot of good comments about how much they read that because there's not much in the Rutland Herald in the Vermont Herald.
Any additional discussion on Article 7? Hearing none, we'll go to Article 8. Excuse me. Does the town vote the following for community and social services totaling $8,635 to be raised by tax? An Australian ballot item. The American Red Cross, $500. Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont, $550. Rutland Mental Health Services, $1,302. VNA and Hospice of Southwest Region, $1,313. RSVP and the Volunteer Center, $100. Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging, $400. Regional Ambulance Service Incorporated, $620. Vermont Adult Learning, $500. Black River Good Neighbor Services Incorporated, $1,000. Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, $150. Marble Valley Regional Transit District, $300. Vermont Center for Independent Living, $100. Green Up Vermont, $150. Child First Advocacy Center, $400. Neighbor Works, $500. Hoquima Valley Television, $750. Any discussion on Article 8? Hearing none, we'll go to Article 9. Does the town vote $2,500 for the Mount Holly Community Historical Museum to be raised by tax? Does anyone wish to speak to that?
Thank you. Before I speak on the museum, I have a question. Diana, were you 50 years the editor?
No.
I'm very confused by what he said, so I thought you were for the past 50 years.
21 years.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, you want to repeat your name?
Oh, Stephen Michelle. All right, I'm going to talk, and it's pretty much going to follow what the letter or the report the museum put in the town's annual report. So I'd first like to thank everybody for the support they give us. It's critical for us because our budget is pretty small. We only spend between $10,000 and $15,000, depending on what needs to be done. Last year, I said the money would go towards painting and taking care of the rot in the Willlight Blacksmith Shop. When we inspected the building a little closer, we didn't do that. What we, we found many more issues, and what we did was apply for a grant from the Preservation Trust of Vermont, and were able to hire an engineer to do an evaluation of the building. We also went and got cost estimates from local contractors on various elements that had to be repaired. There was a lot of water damage under the building, and a lot of the support structures had shifted, which makes life a little interesting when you're trying to walk on the floor. The total cost so far, we figure, is going to be in the neighborhood of $130,000 to do everything we want to bring the building back to where it should be. We're starting to do fundraising. We've applied for a grant for $10,000, and we're waiting for the results to come back. It's the 1772 grant. What we will be doing is we're going to be applying for more grants, and we're also going to be starting a fundraising campaign to actually get money from all of you rather than from them. Depends how you want to work this. So we will need all your support to try and keep the Black... So we will need all your support to try and keep the blacksmith shop back to where it belongs. And therefore, it's used by the schools. It's used by a lot of people in the community. For me, it's a fun place to go if you want to come and take the quiz. It is a hoot to try and figure out what all those pieces are. So again, I'd like to thank you for your support, and I'd like to thank you for any future support I can get out of you. Thank you.
Any more discussion on Article 9?
Say again?
What was the estimate to repair?
It was around $130,000.
It was the estimated amount to repair was $130,000. Article 10. Does the town of Mount Holly vote to fund the after-school program at the Mount Holly School in the amount of $6,500 in fiscal year 2025-2026 to maintain grant funding? The amount to be raised by tax, Australian ballot. Does anyone want to speak to that?
I'm Julie Goray. I'm the Site Coordinator for the Mount Holly After-School Program. I'm pleased to be standing up here and able to thank you all for your past support of the program. The Mount Holly After-School Program is funded in part by the town of Mount Holly, a 21st Century Grant and parent fees. As a Vermont Department of Children and Families Licensed Program, state subsidy is available to assist families. The program operates Monday through Friday from dismissal to 5:00 p.m. We offer a wide variety of activities for the students, including outdoor activities of fort building, bike riding, sledding, playing on snow scooters, pickup sports games, all kinds of things. And we also have other activities. Open library provides opportunity for students to read, create arts and crafts, engage in multiple STEM activities, from racetrack design to chess club and Lego robotics. We also offer tutoring for students and multiple opportunities for them to work together on self-directed projects or teaching each other skills like crocheting and other crafts. We host visits from the Farm and Wilderness each month, the Endless Creations Pottery Studio in Chester. And next week, we'll begin the second year of a theater workshop led by a professional actor and theater educator. The after-school program provides an opportunity for students across the cohorts to build friendships and collaborate on personal and shared goals. This year, we have had 47 kindergarten through sixth grade students enrolled in the program. We serve an average of 38 students each day, and of those, 28 students have enrolled all five days, which shows the need for childcare in our community. The program is available from September to June. We employ licensed teachers as well as school day paraeducators, which allows us to create a consistency from the school day through the afternoon. As always, we continue to adapt and introduce programs to best serve us students and the families. The after-school program is a vital service for Mount Holly families by providing quality after-school care and enrichment for the town's children. I want to end by again thanking you and expressing how appreciative we are for your support. Our goal is to offer this high-quality educational and recreational opportunities while we provide necessary support to the young Mount Holly families.
Any additional discussion on that? Hearing none. Before we move to Article 11, I believe that there was an interest in hearing something about the school or schools. Kelly was going to share some information with us. Craig Hutvater was going to share some information with that. Craig is not a member of a registered voter in town, but he certainly is an important person in this community. I'd like to entertain a motion that we would add that to this agenda and let Kelly and Craig share with us what they'd like to about the schools. Second? Any objection to that? Okay, guys, it's yours.
Thank you. I just... I knew that this... Sorry. I knew that it wasn't exactly our terms of speech, so I tried to keep it short, but I don't mind. So first of all, I am Kelly Tarbell. I am the board chair for the Ludlow Mount Holly Unified Union School District. I'm also a teacher and a community member and taxpayer here in Mount Holly. So I feel like I have a pretty vested interest in our community as well as our education. I've also been on the board a really long time, although I did take a little break for a while. First things, I heard a lot of people last year telling me that they miss the fact that we don't come up and talk at this meeting, and I just wanted to address that. When we closed Black River and changed the format of how things were done, that was one of the things that had to go away. We can't unfortunately be in two places at once, and we need to give the same information to the Ludlow voters as we do the Mount Holly voters. So our meeting is always the week before... tomorrow, the week before voting day. So we had that last week, and then I heard tonight, and I apologize for this. I don't know what happened. Apparently, not everybody in town got our booklet. So I... They went out a long time ago, and I received mine, and so I don't know what happened, and I have no words of wisdom on that. But I would like to talk a bit about our budget. It is up. I'm not going to try to sugarcoat that at all. And I just sort of want to speak to why I voted for it as the budget that we're putting forward to you. We went into the final budget meeting, and I had no idea what I was going to do. I did not know which budget or which proposal, how I was going to vote for it. What came down to was that we are all paying more for everything we're doing, and the school is paying more for everything that they are doing. We have the same increases here as we do in our homes. The budgeting process is not easy. It's a lot of back and forth between the admin and us and community members and answering questions. We have to balance the needs of our kids, the needs of the community, and that's tough. It's not easy. We looked at the budget pie, if you will. The majority of the budget cannot be touched. It is regulated. It is contracted. It is forced upon us in a lot of ways and cannot be touched. The small piece of pie that we can touch is so small that if we wanted to make cuts that made huge differences, it's going to affect our community's education. And I don't think that's something I was willing to do. We contribute to healthcare costs. I know a lot of people think that... And when I say we, I mean we as teachers contribute to our own healthcare. I think a lot of people think that we don't, that the school board is paying for the whole thing. That is not true. The community members are not paying for the whole thing. But we are required to pay for some of the health insurance. We are required to heat the schools and buy the paper and all of those things. When we were looking at those, we, for a very brief second, were given a proposal about closing a building. To me, that is the worst-case scenario. If we did that, our taxes would still go up. Because of the way the funding formula works, our taxes would still have gone up even if we closed a building. That was tough to hear. So when we looked at it, our... the budget that we put forward, which to me is the best-case scenario, made our taxes, they're going to go up anyways. It makes them go up an additional $44 a year per $100,000. So for our house, it's going to be about $88. That is a Dunkin' Donuts coffee, which I'll give up one Dunkin' Donuts coffee a week to keep education in my community. I certainly can answer any questions about the budget. I know this isn't exactly my time, and I can do that after. I'll stay in the back. I'm here. It's not a big deal. The other thing I've heard as a taxpayer, and I don't know if I should be saying this as your board chair or as a taxpayer, but I'm going to just say it. I've heard a lot of people who are super frustrated with taxes, and I get it. We're all there. I heard a lot of people who want to send a message to Montpelier about voting down all of the school budgets. And I would urge you to think hard about doing that. I don't think personally the message that you would send by doing that is the message that they would receive. I think if you want to send a message, you need to do it with your voice, with your email, any other means than with the budget. I think if you vote the budget down for that reason, you're going to send a message to Montpelier that is very different than what you intend. We, sitting in this room, know that we were forced to merge supervisory unions. It didn't save us any money. We were forced to close a school and become one district with Ludlow, and we were promised the world it was going to save us money, and it hasn't. So I think if we send the wrong message to Montpelier and the current proposal from Governor Scott goes through, it's... I don't believe it's going to save us money, and I think it's going to put us in a really bad predicament. I don't think that our small community would be the same without a local school. And I believe that the people in Montpelier believe they are doing the right thing. They are not educators. They are business people, most of them, and I appreciate that. I don't think going to five school districts, or even if they picked 10, is the right thing to do. One of the reasons is that we have... we should have 900 kids in a school building. Great, that works in a lot of places. If we were in Rutland, maybe even in Rutland, it would work because there's a large enough population base to grab 900 kids from a decently geographic area, right? If we were to take the 900 closest kids to Mount Holly, we would be stretching from Mount Holly all the way to Springfield. We would have to incur all of those kids and put them in one building, and our kids would be traveling that distance. And I just picked Springfield because I happen to know how many kids go there and how many kids go to Ludlow and Cavendish. And all of those schools would have to pool to go to one building. And that, I don't think, would even equal 900 kids. It's also the proposal talks a lot about vouchers. I think vouchers are great. Sure, it sounds like school choice, but in actuality, I don't think it would be school choice for most people. I think it would be forced choice. I think right now, most of the kids in seven through 12 go to Mill River that are from Mount Holly because it's what's convenient to their parents. It's not really a choice. It's what they can do. Kids who are living in Ludlow are obviously heading in that direction. And again, it's not a choice. It's where the bus will take them or where their parents work so that they can get them there. It's not really a parent choosing the best school for their kid, which is kind of what this proposal is implying could happen, and it could for some people. But I don't think that's the majority of us. So I would just urge you to please vote for what you think is right. I'm not going to tell you how to vote. But also to think about those things, and if you want your voice to be heard, please choose to do it via phone or email or message our representatives or go to meetings where they are. We have invited a couple of representatives to our school board meeting. Is it next week? I don't know. I don't even know what week it is anymore. The 12th, is that it? So the 12th, we have invited some. I know one person has responded. And so I would encourage you to be there and voice opinion on that as well. And thank you for letting me speak.
Don't leave yet, Kelly. Without any objection, Kelly was very comprehensive in that, and I think it would benefit all of us. If you have any questions for her, that you share them with the body. Kelly could come up and use this microphone, and if you have a question for her, you could use that microphone. If there are any extended discussions, you could do that at the tail end of the meeting. But if you have something that would be a quick question that she could answer, why don't we do it that way? Any objection to that? Kelly, do you want to come up here? Any questions for Kelly? There's your mic.
Thanks, Bridget.
Didn't want to leave you hanging, Kelly. So I noted in the chit chat, because I didn't get a book, so I haven't had a chance to look at it, and everyone around me didn't get a book either. So I heard that from the chit chat, Dave Venter's good comment that the... every school is going to get one more teacher.
Dave Martin.
Dave Martin, sorry.
Yeah, so that's not exactly accurate. We are looking at in that... Sorry. My teacher voice wasn't good enough, I guess. We did put in the proposal to have two more teachers. They would not be at Mount Holly. They would both be in Ludlow. And that would be... Currently, we have... Both schools are doing multi-age classrooms, which has been great.
When you say both schools, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Ludlow and Mount Holly, because those are the schools that we vote on in our one budget now that things are sort of different the last five or six years.
Cavendish is not in this anymore?
Cavendish is part of Green Mountain.
Oh, okay.
So that has... That's been part of our supervisory union, which is different than our district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now I'm confused.
So those two teachers would be Ludlow teachers. Currently, we have multi-age classrooms in both schools, and those multi-age classrooms are... In order to have better outcomes for our students, have purchased a curriculum. And that curriculum is really designed to be for one age group, not a multi-age classroom. And so in order to implement that with fidelity, the idea is that we would go back to one teacher per classroom. Ludlow has had more students per grade because their multi-age classrooms are... And I'm trying to simplify this, but they're multi-age classrooms. So they might have a 1-2 classroom with one teacher. Whereas Mount Holly, we usually have two 1-2 grades. So they're still combined, but we have two of them. So we're taking the total number and still splitting it in two. Whereas in Ludlow, they weren't doing that. Was it last year or the year before? When a teacher retired, we didn't rehire, and those classes grew and basically doubled in size. So the teachers would sort of equal that out and then allow for that curriculum to be implemented with fidelity.
Okay, and I have one other question. How many students are in each of the schools this year?
Ludlow is just under 100, and Mount Holly is right around 100. It fluctuates all the time. Yeah, give or take a little.
79.
99, and do you know Ludlow off the top of your head?
79, it says in the book.
So 79 would have been at the writing of that book, which is probably fairly accurate then, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Kelly?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Article 11 is to transact all other necessary and proper business. Would anyone like to address anything under Article 11?
Again, this is Dennis Deveraux. There's a lot of things coming up over the next few years. Our Select Board appointed the museum, Historical Museum Board, to represent, to be part of the ongoing plans for the celebration in 1775. There was a few things going on. So I know in early May this year, we're having some things going on in Castleton, where Ethan Allen and his Green Mountain Boys met, and a couple of days later, took Fort Ticonderoga without firing a shot. They were... I think the British were sleeping. But so there's a few things going on this year. We're going to share as we see this stuff. It'll be advertised in plenty of places as a 250th commission appointed by the governor last year. So we're gathering information. We'll be sharing it. Next year is a little more going on. Next year is a little more going on, and nationally, it's the United States 250th, so there'll be even more going on. But for most of us that are involved with this, 2027 is the big year. The Vermont, was called Vermont for the first time when they declared their independence, and the following July, they adopted a constitution. But there'll be a lot of things going on in this state, just like there was in 1991, 1992, around the state and around our towns, 225th. So we're going to, we're going to hear more, we're going to hear more over the next year or two, and we'll be sharing the information, and I don't know if anybody's got any questions, but I think there'll be a lot of things going on. I hope that we all can take advantage of some.
Is there any other business that would fall under Article 11? Mr. Hurst?
I don't know if it's under Article 11, or whether we, the article we just left, or the information about the school. But I'd just like to make a comment. Kelly alluded to the fact that, and as many of you know, there's talk in Mount Pelear about a new redistricting of schools in Vermont that we phased in over the next five years, and this is going to supposedly save us all a bunch of money. And as most of you in this room know, I spent 26 years on the school board, and in those 26 years, we had four or five different funding formulas for education. And every time they came up with a new funding formula, it was going to save us all money, and we're going to have better schools and spend less money on them. Well, I got news for you. None of them ever worked, because whatever new formula they came up with, they did not put forward the money to fund it and make it work. And so I urge all of you to contact your legislators and let them know that if they're going to come up with monumental changes, they need to put the money where their mouth is, and give us the money we need to keep good schools for our kids in Vermont, because our small schools are invaluable to these kids, and we need it to continue. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments, business under Article 11?
Hi, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Mark Kirkho, Select Board. There's a couple things that I want to, I want to say. First of all, if everybody goes to like page 14 and 15, you're going to see a list of names from the planning commission all the way down, you know, to district representatives, our board, our treasurers, justices of the peace, and everything. There's a big list of names that put a huge amount of time into this town at their own convenience, and their time from their families and homes, and some of them their jobs. So each one of you that are here, that are on this page, owe yourself a deep thanks and gratitude from the town, because you do put a lot of time and energy into this town, whether it's emergency services, support groups, the first responding teams, you're doing a fabulous job. The next thing I want to say is our town road crew and support of the crew. This year's been a very trying year for the entire town, for all these small little storms. And I know we talk about costs and budgets. It costs just as much, if not more, to take care of two inches of snow as it does 10 and 11 inches of snow. You know, they're out there keeping the roads clean, keeping it safe for each and every one of you, working countless hours, and they all deserve a great thank you for their support of this town.
Oh, yes, one in the back.
One quick question. Can I get a show of hands, if those of you that received the education booklet? I think people did. Thank you. You're going to find out why.
If there is no further business, I guess I'm entering, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second? I see hands up. Any objection? We stand adjourned.